Please rise for pledge.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Steppik, can you take attendance, please?
Certainly.
President Del Sondra.
Here.
Vice President Shoemaker.
Here.
Treasurer Schwag.
Here.
Secretary Steppik, here. Trustee Brazington.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Reese.
Here.
Thank you. Before I get to item number two, I want to just offer, on behalf of the district, our condolences to the families that were affected by the accident out in front of the high school, and to the first responders that had the unfortunate task of responding to that. So, a couple of them were members of our school community, but more importantly, they're members of Oxford's community. Item number two, changes to the board agenda.
Yes, actually, we would like to move number five to number 11.
Okay. Item three, the consent agenda, which is meeting... I'm sorry. Thank you, Pat. Can I have a motion for that? Ms. Shoemaker?
Make a motion to move item number five, Board of Education Matters, to item number 11, which would in effect make item 11, 12, and so on.
Okay. Support, Mr. Reese? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you again, Pat. Item three, consent agenda. We have meetings of... the minutes of October 11th, bills payable for August of 2016, and some recommendations for higher, which all these items were in your board packet. Mr. Schwag?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support? Mrs. Brazington? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pre-arranged request to address the board, which is item number four.
Yes, so, actually, Jeff Brown's stepmom passed away unexpectedly. So, I'm sure that Jeff would very much appreciate the ability to reschedule and present at a later time to the board, so we will not be having the presentation of Cultures of Thinking tonight. With that being said, also in front of you are books that are being donated to the OES Media Center on behalf of each of the board members. And Maureen Kiplinger wanted me to make sure that... Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Okay. So, which is now item number six will be curriculum and instruction. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, well, we have today, we're looking at purchasing some classroom library books for the K-2 teachers in the district. We're looking at purchasing approximately about $168,000 with the books for the K-2. As you know, if you ever go into the elementary classrooms, they have a lot of books in there that are individual leveled readers for the kids. They need more. We have implemented a new reading curriculum this year. Two years ago, we implemented the writing component of that curriculum. We're now doing the reading component of that curriculum. It has... we have the units of study, which is the teaching material, the curriculum books for the teachers. And now, what this is asking for is for the K-2 classroom library component. Obviously, with the new third grade reading bill, we wanted to address this as quickly as possible so that as those kindergartners, those current kindergartners go up through the grade levels, that we have the resources necessary for them to be successful. These books that we're looking at from Heinemann... Heinemann has kind of like an exclusive... exclusivity contract with Lucy Cawkins, which is the reading curriculum. That's why you only see the Heinemann bid here. This is for level libraries for in the classrooms. So, this would be for K-2. We're looking at, if things hold well with enrollment, looking at doing 3-5 within the next nine months so that we have the teachers' libraries set. Currently, a lot of their books, that is books that they have gotten of their own volition through selling Scholastic readers and so... books through their classrooms. And so, we're looking to help out their libraries that... specifically, and why we need these books, even though you'll see quite a few libraries that... classroom libraries that are outfitted well. These... the series of books that Lucy Cawkins requires differ somewhat from the books that they have currently in their classrooms. So, that's why we need to match up the libraries with their units of study. Any questions?
Ken, even though Heinemann has an exclusive contract with Lucy Cawkins, do you feel that those bids are competitive?
Yeah, we did check into that. I had Mrs. Magdaleno, who's the literacy, K-5 literacy coach, check into that. And the amount of books that you're getting with the price, yes, it came out to be a very good price.
Thank you.
She wholeheartedly supported it. Yes.
Do you know how many classrooms this affects? Because we have obviously multiple buildings.
It's about half, so it's about... and also DK is... there's two bids here. You also have the developmental kindergarten. We felt it was important to give them some emergent reader material. Also, as well, some leveled A literacy books as well, too. It's about 40 to 45... about 45 teachers, I would say. About half of our staff.
Is this going to include a book for each student? Or...
No, well, I mean, eventually, in a sense, it would. But this is leveled readers that would stay in the classroom. They would check them out, take them home, read them, bring them back. And they would also be for shared reading time, small group reading, personal reading time as they do the reading workshops. So, it's both material that would stay in the classroom, and the teachers would work with the kids on. And it's also where, you know, I don't know if... when your kids went through school, they brought home a book in a bag kind of thing, and they would read at home. That... to support that as well, too. So, it does both.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, we need a motion if you're okay?
Yeah, I'm just... Get into that part. I have a motion, please. Mrs. Brazington?
I move to approve the purchase of Lucy Cawkins Classroom Library Collections for Grades DK-2 at a cost of $162,750 for the elementary K-2 classrooms, and $4,998 for the DK classrooms from Heinemann, a division of Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt.
Support? Mr. Steppik? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Teachers are greatly appreciative. They are very excited.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping me on my toes. Greatly excited. Item six, finance and operations. Mr. Barna?
Good evening. I have nothing on the agenda specifically, but I did want to just give everyone an update and let everyone know that we are jointly hosting with Oxford Township Parks and Rec Community Forum on both tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Oxford Township offices off of Dunlap Road, 300 Dunlap Road, 7:00 PM, to talk about, obviously, the ballot proposals that are on the ballot for, obviously, the school district, as well as, obviously, for Parks and Rec. And then, on Thursday, at the same time, 7:00 PM, just wanted to let you know again, and let everyone know out there that open to the public as well at Oxford High School at the similar community forum. Anyone's welcome to attend the actual meeting, obviously, to talk about what the villages are and what they are not.
Okay. Item seven, human resources. Mrs. Latauski?
Yes, thank you, board, for approving the higher recommendation. We are recommending this evening Amy Greenspan, who will be working for Oxford Virtual Academy as a half-time counselor and a half-time science teacher. And we are extremely pleased to find someone of her caliber for the program. She'll do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And just goes to show that hiring just isn't a summertime thing here in Oxford anymore. It's year-round, so...
Correct.
And that's a very good thing. Item number eight, student services. Mrs. Sweet?
There's a motion this evening for Schools of Choice for second semester. And then, I have a presentation regarding enrollment. I guess first is the Schools of Choice for second semester.
Okay.
That memo was in your board package.
Yes, it was. I have a motion on the table. Mr. Schwag?
Move to approve Schools of Choice for the second semester trimester of the 2016-2017 school year as follows. Kindergarten, fifth grade, limited to 25 slots at each grade level. Sixth through 11th, unlimited. Oxford Virtual Academy.
Support? Support, Mrs. Mitchell?
Support.
Any discussion?
I think I'm just concerned about bringing that many kids into the elementary schools for just second semester. Those classrooms have already been established. The class sizes have been pretty much established. The culture of the classroom's been established. And I guess I would just be concerned about opening up the door for that many students halfway through the school year.
So, just a couple of pieces of information. Over the last few years, and maybe Denise will point this out, the number of students that we've picked up elementary, second semester, I think, was like, maybe...
Ten to fifteen.
Four one year, four another year, two another year. So, we're not talking great numbers. What we did do, however, is look at, across the district, all the classrooms that we have, how many seats we have open, that we could insert one or two students in that classroom without going above our numbers. So, let's just say that we had a record amount of elementary students who came second semester. Let's say that there was 25. We would not be putting them all in one classroom or all in one school. They would be spread out. So, we would lessen the impact of those existing classrooms as much as possible. So...
I understand the financial impact for the district to bring those kids in. I just worry about where they are academically. So, as you come into a school year, 21 weeks in, you know, you have missed 20 weeks of Oxford school instruction. And it's not the same. And I love the School of Choice kids, especially, like, in the fall, when they're limited. I would just be concerned about the academic resources those kids may or may not take halfway through the school year. You only have so many reading recovery slots. You only have so many Title I tutors available. I would just worry about how they would acclimate into the buildings halfway through the school year.
Mr. Shoemaker?
I totally hear what you're saying. I guess I'm also wondering, like, say, they were in another district kindergarten first, and then they come in second grade at the beginning of the school year. Are they also going to be behind at that time because they haven't been in our system for, like, our first two years? Because I know we're pretty progressive.
It's been my experience, you know, working in Oxford, that the kids who do come in from School of Choice in some of the districts that aren't connected to Oxford, boundary-wise, the kids do come from different backgrounds and sometimes are behind. But I know that we can address it sooner if it's in the beginning of the year. Where, right now, you have so many resources that are already being allocated to kids who are already sitting in our seats. But I would just be concerned about loss of resources or different demands of our resources for kids who are already here.
Is it your experience? Because I've never been a principal, so I don't know. Do we, like, assess them? And maybe we would say, because we're halfway through the year and you're...
Once we open up our doors to School of Choice, we open up our doors. We don't get to say yes or no. The only reason we could say no is if there was some kind of discipline offense where the student has a discipline record. We could say no.
But do we assess where they're at, grade-wise?
When they come into our building.
So, we could say, you know, we're already halfway through second grade. You're not performing there. We think we'll let you in, but it needs to be first grade.
Yeah, no, those kinds of conversations really don't happen, especially halfway through a school year.
I think we're splitting hairs here. I don't think that there's going to be a problem. I don't think we'll ever... it's possible. I don't think we'll get to 25. And if we did, 25 split across every grade level across the entire district, I don't think that we're going to overburden the resources or overburden teachers or... that's my thought. And same with Kim's point. What's the difference if they come the following year? Then we're starting with the kids the following year. So, you know, half a year or the whole year. If you're putting your effort into it, we either approve it based on we're going to do it or we don't. I don't think the argument that we're overburdening the system is valid in my...
Well, that's fine. This is just a discussion.
Yep.
And I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm just saying this is my opinion.
And I don't... Sometimes I come off a little too...
Harsh. As you look at me and point your finger.
My wife says Eric.
Thank you.
But I guess back to my question. Could we have that discussion to say, you're already coming in a half a year. You're really not at that level. We'll let you in, but it could be at a different grade level?
There's a lot behind me.
Is that... excuse me. Is that a discussion at the board office level before they get here, Denise? Where is... okay, you...
We wouldn't know their skill level. When they're coming in and enrolling, we're checking, you know, residency and immunization and those types of things. We're not assessing the student. That doesn't happen until they get into the building. You know, retention is not something we take lightly in the district. So, retentions do happen.
I'm also a big proponent of K-1 intervention. And, you know, maybe look at School of Choice for kindergarten first grade. Because if they've been in a system, K-1, 2, 3, 4, they come to us in the middle of their fifth grade year. That child is at a true disadvantage when he comes into our building and then goes to Oxford Middle School. And that's just my opinion and been my experience.
It's something that we need to be mindful of because, number one, we want to do what's right for any student that's coming in. And we want to do what's right for our students that are here. With the way things are going right now, I'm not so sure we're not going to have a lot of School of Choice folks from Orion that are going to... I had the pleasure of watching their last school board meeting. And a lot of their parents have said, we now have choices. And I think that, you know, if you listen to the narrative that's out there, a lot of people say, well, why would anybody from Lake Orion want to come to Oxford? Because their test scores are so high. But their parents have said, point blank, we want a choice. And they don't have that choice with what they're doing. And this isn't to disparage Lake Orion. I think they do a fine job. I'm just looking at it from Oxford's perspective and what we could be looking at here in the not-so-distant future with students coming in from Lake Orion, Clarkston, districts like that. So, where everybody else is having a difficult time financially, they're making cuts. And parents, the one thing that they do not want is a cut from their kid. And they're going to find someplace that's not cutting. And we so happen to be the district that isn't doing that right now. And I'm not arguing my point against yours. I'm just, again, it's conversation. I think we need to look at that when we're having this discussion. So, just wanted to bring it up.
So, the new law, Ken, on the reading requirements, say, we did have it in flux. That potentially is going to affect a student's placement anyway, right?
If they're not reading by third grade, yes, it would. And so, it's the first year when a student comes in, their M-step scores are not attributed to us. They go back to the school where they came from. So, you've got to be here a full academic year. So, you've got some time to take school... and they did that for School of Choice. So, the districts would take in School of Choice, work with the kids, and have a little bit of time to maybe get them up to speed if they are not. So, we would have that benefit.
Would the board consider, or wherever the recommendation came from, would you consider lowering the number of students instead of 25 slots? Since Tim has said it only goes as high as three or four. Could we lower that number? So, it just doesn't seem so intrusive to the district.
I think we're almost on the same page here, Joyce. I think maybe we take a look at and lean on the experts. Does it make a difference if we go, maybe not... maybe change the number to maybe changing K through 3, to Joyce's point, where the earlier we can get them, the more we can do. I guess where I look at it is our number, as we see it, is that third grade level being the pinch point where we have enrollment. Where we have opportunity there to place students. That gives us two years before they get to the middle school to try to help them get to where they need to be. I just... I think that might be a solution. I just don't want to put a student coming from any district at a disadvantage when they get to the middle school because it can be a daunting task to try to catch up at that point. I mean, it's just a thought.
So, you could amend that motion to read K-3, 25 slots. You could amend that motion to read K-5, 10 slots at each grade level. You have, as the board, the authority to amend that.
I will tell you, I asked Cabinet what number they were comfortable with recommending so that we could ensure, if we reached that number, it would not require us to hire more teachers. So, the 25 per grade level is the high end, okay? So, I just want you to know and be clear on that. So, you can back that down as much or as little as you want. I just don't want to go over that.
Sure. Could we look at Denise's presentation and then sort of take a look at where the numbers are? Maybe I'll feel a bit differently if I look at the presentation.
But I'd like to hear your recommendation. If we were going to make a change, what would that look like?
So, my presentation doesn't have anything to do with this motion.
Oh, okay.
That when I looked at across the elementary buildings, how many, like, seats were available, I went grade by grade, section by section, building by building. There were 333 seats available across DK-5, and you would not have to hire more staff. So, 25 at each grade level was well within that range. But again, you can amend that to, you know, just do K-3 or do 10 slots or whatever you want. But the data that I have doesn't have anything to do with those numbers.
I could just say, just like we've done with other situations, that we... Cabinet went over this thoroughly, investigated everything. That we leave it up to Cabinet and not change what they recommend.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Can I ask one more question? Is there a reason... Does DK have to have some kind of School of Choice resolution to bring in DK kids?
DK is really kindergarten. So, in the eyes of the state, there is no DK. DK is a kindergarten student. We get a full FTE. They are counted as a kindergarten student.
Okay.
So, we choose in Oxford to offer a developmental kindergarten program to students. And the state allows us to do that.
Thank you.
I'm assuming some of this, we have had decreased numbers because of the decreased birth rate. So, we're low on our own anyway, as is most of the state, right?
Our elementary numbers are down about 50 students across the district when you compare... I have that, Joyce.
And then, School of Choice doesn't necessarily equal students who perform poorly, correct?
Correct. Just as many students that come in that may be struggling, we also take in students that are in, you know, our high-end programs at the high school that are, you know, some are far higher performers. So, I don't have data that would support all Schools of Choice students come in below grade level. Just as many come in at or above grade level.
How do you decide how you... Say, you actually did get 25 students in fifth grade. How do you figure out how you disperse them? Obviously, they don't all go into one building.
So, we ask parents for their choices. So, we ask them for, you know, their first, second, and third choice. I would like OE, then I would like Lakeville, then I would like Clear Lake. We try to honor those requests as best that we can. Most often, we are able to. We always group families together. So, I'm School of Choice, and I... third grade, and I've been here for two years. And then, here comes along my kindergarten sibling. We automatically place them in the same school. We try to honor requests where families may be carpooling. I'm coming from Brandon, and my, you know, my sister and my sister-in-law. And we want to be together because we're carpooling. So, we try to honor requests. If we can't, we typically are having conversations with those families and trying to get them their second choice there. What is a good fit for them? We look at... we try to keep a balance between buildings. So, I'm not overtaxing fifth grade at Clear Lake. And then, OE numbers are... fifth grade are down. So, we continually watch those numbers. We usually, in the fall, we do not place Schools of Choice students. Middle school, high school, we do elementary. We usually wait till about the third week in August when most residents are enrolled. My numbers are looking stable. And then, we go in and place all the Schools of Choice.
So, it really is a situation... let's just say we have a student from Dryden, and I'm using this just for the example of it being close to Leonard. There is no space in Leonard. Here's where there's space. Parent either chooses that school, and that's it. We don't say, well, we live closer to Leonard. We want to go to Leonard. Well, this is the only spot we have available. And they have to make the choice to get in that way.
There's one grade level at Leonard that's really high right now. Is it third or fourth? That if you came in and said, I want Leonard, fourth grade, I would be saying, no, you know, I can't meet your need.
Go ahead, Mr. Schwag.
Thank you. First of all, I'm glad to hear all this discussion. I'm actually, I know a lot of things I hadn't considered about this and glad to hear the process because I didn't fully understand it of how we acclimate students in a school of choice. And it's excellent to hear that we try to accommodate sisters and sister-in-laws and families and everything like that. That's tremendous. Also, I share some of Joyce's concerns and didn't realize at firsthand of what some of the costs might be of coming to the district. With that said, however, having heard of our enrollment declines in the, in the elementaries, I was glad to hear that we were looking at a way to supplement that somehow. Myself personally, I'm comfortable with the 25 slots per each grade based on what the history has been in terms of three or four or five people coming. I'm wondering if we could look at this as a pilot project for the semester and say, a report maybe a month after the school starts and saying, here's what happened. You know, here's what we've got and here's, here's what we're looking at. Then we can decide because I think this is a tremendous opportunity in terms of what schools need to do in terms of growing enrollment for us to have students come in, get them the Oxford experience. Because for the second semester, if I recall, it's only 10% of the foundation grant that's available to us. So, but however, what we can do is we have an opportunity to show these folks what we do in Oxford and hopefully impress them so that they'll be wishing to stay for a number of years after and with our programs. So I guess with that said, I'm comfortable with the recommendation as it's stated.
Any other discussion? Okay, I remember the days where it was K through nine. Remember? So, all right. I didn't write it down. Do we have, we have not had a motion yet?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we did.
Motion is made. We've had a second.
We had a discussion.
Mike made the motion. Carol seconded.
Thank you. See, that's why you're the secretary. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to presentation.
The presentation. So at the last board meeting, Joyce had asked for an update on just some district numbers and trends. So just have a quick couple of slides to give you some information. So if you want to look at our trends over the years, from 2011 until currently 2016 are our preliminary numbers. So we continue to trend upward even though our elementary numbers are down a little bit, our high school, our secondary numbers are up. So we still are continuing to grow in the district. This is a total FTE count and in your board pack is all the data to support these total numbers. So if you want to go in and look at a specific building, a specific grade, I provided all of those FTE sheets that we provide to the state. So if you want to dig deeper, you can. This is always a piece of data that everybody likes to look at. It's the kind of the class of. You can look at it two different ways. You can look at it, follow the colors down. Here's your kindergarten class all the way down to when they graduate. You can look at the increase in class size. Or another way you could, if you want to look down, you can see, you know, in 2001, there were 209 kindergarteners. This year, we have 207 kindergarteners enrolled. There was a year that 2008 where our kindergarten class was at 408. So if you want to either look down at class size over the year or diagonally, it'll give you your class of data. And that's also in your PowerPoint if you want, if you want to see it bigger. Elementary, looking at 15, 16 data and then this year, 16, 17 data. This is by building. So you can see that our elementary buildings are down about total, about 50 students. I'm kind of going like this.
Okay.
So, and again, that data is, there's extra sheets in your packet that show if you want to look per building, per section, per teacher, and that data shows you DA kindergarten classes are at like 24, 25, 24. So you can look at, if you want to look at specific sections. And then this is the same data but broken out by grade. So if you want to look at Clear Lake, they have 16 students in DA all the way across. You can look at their, at the class sizes and there's that corresponding data in your package as well. Middle school is kind of starting to flatten out. You had the one year right now with that one really big eighth grade class last year has now moved to the high school. So our middle school enrollment is starting to trend down just a little bit, but I think that's really due to that large ninth grade class right now. I think that was the kindergarteners way back when. And then at the high school, when you look at the, the data sheets for the high school, you really need to be aware that you're, you're picking out program data to get that total number because there are multiple programs at the high school that merge together to create that total FTE at the high school. You have traditional seated kids that come first hour, stay through seventh, excuse me, stay through seventh hour. You have the international students, you know, the first year they're there, they're there for two years. So that, those numbers are in that data when, so you have to pull those out, tease that up. Oxford Early College, at the beginning of, you know, ninth, 10th grade, the early college students are seated in almost all high school classes. But then as they progress through early college, they start to do online classes, they start to do college classes. So by the time they're fourth year, fifth year, they may only be, you know, seated one class at the high school. So you have to add that data in, you know, that FTE in, but then you have to take it back out at the 10th or the 11th, 12th grade. So, you know, you have OVA part-time students, students that may be enrolled in OVA but choose to come to the high school for one or two classes. So then you have to be cognizant of those students that may come just first and second hour. So you kind of have to add that FT in for just that portion that they're there. And then we also have our high school loft program, our 18 to 26-year-old students. Those students are counted in that high school mix as well, even though they are, you know, not in any high school classes. They're totally separated from the high school, but we still collect an FTE on them. They're 18 through 26 years. So those numbers are in there. So I think when you look at that data and you're trying to figure out what's the total FTE at the high school, you need to consider all of these things. Do you have any questions?
Where do the kids who like go to St. Joe's that maybe we just teach like them art or we teach them Chinese, they just come into our building, where is their count at?
They're, they don't come into our buildings like we go, that shared time at St. Joe's. We have teachers that go to St. Joe's. And when you look at those data sheets and you'll see Clear Lake, OE, DA, goes all the way down, then you'll start to see shared time St. Joe's.
That's what that's referring to.
Only, you just see their FTE in our total. So you can see at the bottom of that, you'll see all the shared time programs. And so you'll see where that, those FTEs are.
Do we have any elementary students who are just coming in for special or for a language or for?
Some, but not many. We do have some homeschool students that may just come, go to Clear Lake because they want art, gym, music, and mom is homeschooling the core classes. We have a few.
Okay.
But I think there's lots of opportunities for that type of programming through OVA so you don't see that as much. Am I right, Drew? Speak up.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, item number nine, Oxford Virtual Academy. Mr. Halbert.
I don't have anything formal tonight, but I wanted to thank everybody that came out last Thursday night for our open house, our grand opening for the new learning center. There is extreme interest in the neighboring communities. We're seeing numerous families come and take tours. We, we have, we have a wide open for families to come in, take tours. So there's a lot of interest. Families now see that they can, they can homeschool or school at home, but they can take advantage of dropping a student off, working with teachers. We are evaluating some new curriculum to have more blended courses so there'll be more hands-on activities to maximize the use of that space. So we're, the teachers are extremely excited, the students are really excited, and we're seeing a whole lot of interest driving our way. Teachers want to make sure I thank you for allowing us to do that.
Well, I will say when we were there at the opening, it was last Wednesday, there were probably six or seven students, I mean, K through five. And it was just amazing to see Terry gets in the room, closes the door, and she's teaching. And we were there for an hour, hour and a half, and the kids were engaged for 45 minutes to an hour. And to them, learning was having fun. And I would just, I would hesitate to, it, it makes me very, very proud to be able to offer that type of a learning environment to students that maybe wouldn't be that excited in a classroom. So please tell the staff that we are very, very proud of Virtual Academy. We're very, very proud of the way that they've done it. We're very proud of the way that they've navigated the landscape because it's a, it's a program that's ever-changing, just like technology. So thank you for what you do and please thank the staff. Okay, item 11, board policy. Our policy group, which consists of Mr. Schwag and Mrs. Mitchell, have worked diligently on our second reading, actually, on the first reading, they brought it to us. Now we have to have a second reading of those policies.
I move to approve a second reading of bylaw 0144.3 Conflict of Interest and Policy Number 6110 Grant Funds, 6111 Internal Controls, 6112 Cash Management of Grants, 6114 Cost Principles Spending Federal Funds, 6116 Time and Effort Reporting, 6146 Post-Issuance Compliance for Tax Exempt and Tax Advantage Obligations, 6424 Purchasing Cards, 6550 Travel Payment and Reimbursement, 7300 Disposition of Real Property, 7310 Disposition of Surplus Property, 7450 Property Inventory, 8142.01 Weapons, 9211 District Support Organizations, 1240 Evaluation of the Superintendent, 1420 School Administrator Evaluation, 3220 Professional Staff Evaluation, 3131 Staff Reduction/Recalls, 1130 Conflict of Interest Administration, 3110 Conflict of Interest Professional Staff, 4110 Conflict of Interest for Support Staff.
I'll second that.
Support Mr. Schwag. Any discussion?
Just out of discussion, I'd like to say, Joyce, for reading that.
Oh, you have to reread it.
I just like to say, thank Mike and Carol for doing that. And what all those policies point out is the job of the board, the true job of the board creates policy and the superintendent makes sure it's implemented through the employees. So, you know, that's a prime example right there of all the work that went into that to get those policies up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 11. Board of Education Matters, Mr. Thron.
So the first item are some proposals really having to do with the maintenance of our networking gear, our, our switches, as well as software support for our phone automation system and call manager software. This software is bid out at the state level on the RMC contract, but because it's of such a large amount on those, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It'll sit out there and I'll be bringing a motion at our next board meeting for the approval of that purchase. Or just an FYI.
Tim, can you clarify what RMC is, please?
RMC stands for Regional Educational Media Center, maybe? And a while ago, they were put in charge of bidding different items out at the state level that all districts could take advantage of.
So it's more of a consortium?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Item B, board responses to questions posed.
So I was contacted via email with numerous questions and in discussion with the board president, we decided that maybe the best way to tackle this is to bring these questions before the board, see what the questions are. And I've asked Sam and Drew, the majority of the questions were posed to them and they're two areas of expertise. And so at this time, they are going to present those questions and responses to the board.
Okay, who's going to start?
Good evening again, everyone. And so just a little background as well before I get into the questions that were posed to both you and I last week. We were FOIA'd, I believe it was approximately seven weeks ago, with our preliminary 15-16 financial statements, both income statement as well as balance sheet. In addition to that, there was the 14-15, same thing, income statement, balance sheet, all funds, not just general fund. And so we sent those files along with a key to help the users of those Microsoft Excel documents basically go through, do what they want to do, do the data analysis that they would like to do via the keys that we provided in order to interpret the data. So I just wanted to lay the groundwork for this. This is, what you see here is actually one report. It's approximately, it's actually 3,000 pages, 2,999 pages, and it's double-sided. This is the 2015-16 income statement at 55% resolution. And so again, that's just one year. What I have here that was sent as well is the 15-16 balance sheet for all funds. This is just our general fund, which is Fund 11, as well as the Fund 12, which is special education, as well as Fund 15, which is athletics. So our general fund as a, yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. Is this the result of a FOIA that you printed all these out?
It is an example of what was provided electronically. Just this, you know, this is one example of what was provided electronically.
Okay, thank you.
So that being said, that lays the groundwork for the questions that were posed to both Drew and I approximately, I believe it was a week ago, actually. Is that right, Drew? About a week ago? So I'm going to walk through, this is the actual email that was sent. There were 18 questions posed to me specifically. And so right now, I'm going to just list that and Drew and I, I think it's going to be my huckleberry, so I appreciate that with this presentation. So thank you. We're going to dive into those questions at a detailed level and answer those. So the first question was, where can I find the complete expense and income from the 2016 Hoopla event, including all associated fees, facility rental, cleanup, supplies, insurance, staff, security? Answer, previously set GL Detail Revenue Expense Fund 1115. That's the name of this file that was sent per that FOIA seven weeks ago. Within accounts found in rows 91,528 through rows 91,543. Also, some revenue was collected after June 30th, 2016. So that's where those specific, again, basically fees can be found. Number two, what was the final profit, if any, from the Hoopla event after all expenses were accounted for? What accounts are the income and expenses shown in? Answer, there was $8,430 of actually revenue and donations combined. And so there was $8,324 of expenditures resulting in a profit of $106. That was deposited into account 11E2327910, all zeros with the, the last four digits being 0053, and along with the expenditures. That account number, and I should have stated this and I apologize that I didn't, but that account number is also obviously included within this file as well. What were the following payments for and what account were they assigned? That's question three. Zachary Lyne, $540. The answer is the airfare for the Hoopla coach, Zach Lyne, was $512.20. It's found in that account, 11E2327910, again, same account that I mentioned above. The next portion of that question was Halas for $2,300. The answer was the dump team cheerleaders DJ from the Pistons for the Hoopla event, again, hitting the same account. Tool Sport and Sign for $1,362. The answer to this was the bronze plaques for Helen and Andy at the high school, again, hitting that same account. Number four, what did Integrated Design Solutions supplier provide to the district for the following charges, 21016, of $2,097.50? The answer was the architectural engineering and design fees for the service building in Oxford High School, a portion of it, because at the time, OCTV was very interested in leasing space within the high school. And so therefore, we had to conduct this, obviously, this analysis of what can be done at these individual spaces. So I believe that payment right there was through services offered, I believe, ending June. I believe, ending June, I'm sorry, June, January the 22nd or 29th, 2016. The second part was 3916, $7,160. Answer, it was, again, obviously, architectural engineering design for concession building at OHS. If the board does recall, there was some discussion about making some renovations to the concession building at, obviously, Oxford High School. So, that charge was specifically related to the design and potentially running 600 linear feats, I believe, of waterline, electrical, so on and so forth. In addition, 3916, there was $6,402. Again, architectural engineering design for the service building through February 27th. So, the same, the same project answered in the first one under number four, but through a different portion of time, which this takes us through February 27th. Last, not the last one, but the 6916, $7,200. Again, obviously, architectural engineering design for furniture and the bid package for OVA for the new space at Marketplace. So, obviously, the furniture that had to be selected, designed for the space, ordered. We put out a bid package that was handled by, obviously, and designed by IDS. And so, that was that component of OVA's expansion and then in the new space at 168 South Washington. In addition, the last one, which is 623, 2016, of $15,567.20, obviously, again, architectural engineering design for the Marketplace expansion. So, this is the build-out. This is the actual layout of the space, obviously, the design and engineering, including HVAC, electrical, so on and so forth. Well, thank you. Is it a possibility? Sorry. Bring it here. Maybe not. Okay, is the, I'll try my best here. Is the 201516 International Student Budget Information, two pages currently found on the district website, a substantially complete and accurate account of the income and expenses related to educating students with an F1 visa? I noticed that I didn't answer that first component, and I'm gonna answer verbally right now. The answer's yes, but I'm gonna dive into why it's yes. Who created that document? I did, Sam Barner. The reason why it's yes, I think I'll dive down to that in a minute. Hold on, maybe I won't. What was posted online, I believe the net income was $252,400 and change. So, it ended up, because that information that was put out was pre-audit, it was pre-close. We do now have the audited financials that were just sent to us this week because we're wrapping up the audit. The final number, I thought I put it down there somewhere, maybe it's further down, is $246,000 and change. So, it's approximately $5,000 and change, $6,000 less of a profit than what was posted on the website. Number two, does it include the cost of the teachers, professionals, and support staff costs, including benefits, workers' comp, health insurance, accrued sick days, vacation, other, pension, and other employee-related expenses? Yes, that's the answer. Does it include utilities, maintenance, janitorial and related costs? Answer, no, because we charge these expenses across the district at a building level. We don't hit individual programs in the district with those types of costs. Does it include the per-people estimated cost of facility they receive instruction at, high school? Answer, no. Where did the funds come from to pay the $2,500 Oxford-Addison Youth Assistance Sponsorship on 71415? Answer, the general fund, account 11E3917910, which is included in these documents as well. Number seven, where can I find a complete accounting for donors, donations, and expenses for the Wildcats statute? Answer, previously set in the GL Detail Balance Sheet, so the smaller one here, okay? I have the name of it, actually. And it's found in the rows 14,016 through row 14,175. In short, all labor was volunteered and $8,500 in donations were received from the following donors. JS Clark Agency, $3,000. Rochester Neans Sports Medicine, $1,000. McLaren Oakland, $1,000. Student Leadership Council, $3,500. What services, number eight, did Health Quest provide 101415 for $31,000? Answer, certified athletic trainers for athletics, obviously. What was the total income for the OVA? Answer, the district has not directly assigned the state aid funding that we receive each month to individual programs in the district such as OVA. It goes into our general fund as a whole. However, if you calculate what our per-people state aid is, which is $7,391 for 1516, and multiply it by the FTE generated from OVA last year, the revenue would equal That's the revenue. The total income, because the question is actually, what is the total income? After all OVA expenditures was $1,930,872. Number 10, what is the total expenses for the OVA? Answer, $3,668,507. And I just want to be clear, again, the answers to this question specifically, there's accounts in there that show these dollars. Maybe a little bit different because this was pre-close, but it's very close to these final numbers. Number 11, what is the total income for all of the international programs together, OIP and OIRA? Answer, the total revenue for OIP was $1,171,100, while the total income was $246,644. Because that was the question, what was the total income? Note, OIP and OIRA are the same program. Today, we call it OIP, even though some accounts within our financial system still have a designation, a description of those account numbers, with it still saying OIRA, but it's the same thing. OIP and OIRA are the same thing. Number 12, what is the total expenses for all the international programs together, OIP, OIRA? Answer, total expenditures were $924,456. What is the total income from the IB program? Answer, zero. IB is a district-wide framework method of teaching. 14, what is the total expense of the IB program, including IB, PYP, MYP, DP, and CP? I didn't know what CP was, but the answer is this. The total amount for the IB program, including all of those acronyms, and I'm guessing CP is meant to be something else, but it is $426,267. Those are the total expenses for the IB program, 1516. Number 15, there appears to be a negative budget amounts in the data provided, is this correct? Answer, yes, in both revenue and expenditure accounts, there are instances where a negative budget is appropriated. 16, it appears that the beginning amounts for this fiscal year do not match the ending amounts from last fiscal year, is this correct? Obviously, when you look at that question, they're referring to the balance sheet, and so, this small document here. And yes, it is the way our system, which is called Skyward, has created the standard report that is RAN, that's called the Balance Sheet Report. When running the report for any given monthly date parameter, so, we run this for a 12-month period, obviously. Our fiscal year is July 1st of any given year through June 30th of the next year. When you run that report, basically, unfortunately, because that report created the way that it was by Skyward, it doesn't give the ending, or the beginning balance of the month that you select. It gives the beginning balance of the last month that is provided. It's wacky, but that's the way that that works. So, that's why they questioned, the answer to that question is yes. Number 17, is or has at-risk funds been spent on any component of the international students? Answer, yes. Title III is required to service all immigrant students that are considered at-risk. Number 18, is the fine for failing to report required information to the state shown in this dataset? If so, where? Answer is no, not in 201516. I know of no fine to the state for 1516. Any questions from the board room, myself?
Sam, you had indicated, excuse me, in that last one, about money's going towards international students, they need remediation or anything. Who determines that? Is that determined when they get here, by student services? Or is that determined after they, either when they get here or is it, do we have to assign those funds before they come to Oxford?
The way it works is, because they're international students, they're immigrant students, they're considered by federal government, federal law, they're considered immigrant students. And therefore, because they're in their schools, we have to make sure that they receive appropriate services, language services for them. So, during that first year and that first year only, we service them. The title, the at-risk funds that are used in that situation, also, those parapros also service most of our elementary kids as well, too. So, they do both.
So, there's, those parapros are district-wide wherever needed?
Yeah, and we also get funding because of the immigrant students coming in. We also get federal funds as well, too. Nowhere near to offset all the costs in that, but it does help to phrase some of them.
And that's over and above the FTE?
Yes, it's over and above.
Okay, thank you.
So, Sam, if I'm understanding right, the one stack of paperwork is applying to one year?
Correct, that's our income statement for one year.
So, we...
It's 100, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's 170,000 rows of data within an Excel spreadsheet. Because it's all of the detailed transactions within each revenue and expenditure account within the general fund. That's not even all of our funds.
And how many years of that have we provided?
I'll be honest with you, I've only been here for a little over a year. This is the first I've ever been asked for it specifically to me. But I don't know, I mean, that's a question. I think we'd have to do some research and find out how many times it's, something like that's been asked for. I don't know.
How many years, how many fiscal years' worth of information have you provided?
I provided this year, 1516 last year, and then 1415 as well. I didn't want to print that out in some more treatise, but I just wanted to give an example of what was produced. Again, that's 55% resolution and I, you know, could've probably went 5,000 pages if I wanted to make it legible, so.
So, this is just my perspective. We have auditors that go through our stuff every year who are highly trained to look for red flags. How easy is that to understand to someone like me who would not be trained in?
Well, I provided a key, and that key code was for all different objects within each of these accounts. So, our account number is quite long. Any school district in the state of Michigan, Public Schools in the state of Michigan, has an absurdly long account code structure. And frankly, it's, it needs to have a key from those that don't understand school finance. It's just common sense, and that's why I provided a key. I had to create it from scratch because there's no key. I mean, the people that use our system are people that are trained to look at financial data for a school district. So, I wanted the layman out there to find that it was a little bit easier to manipulate through Excel if they had a key. So, to answer your question, you know, with that key and a lot of time, and if you have some Excel skills, you know, Microsoft Excel skills such as sorting data, pivot tables, you can get what you want. That's the bottom line. However, you know, again, you can't just press a button and find out, for instance, you know, you could see that an expenditure maybe was made, but you can't tell why, you know? So, you know, questions are asked about, well, what's this for? You still need to dig in. There's, you know, 4,000 roughly, general fund accounts, as an example. You gotta click in our system and get to the very nitty-gritty detail, pull up the invoice and say, oh, yeah, that's what that expenditure's for. There's not a single button pressed and says, there it is, there's your answer. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. I mean, thank you for doing all of that for us because I will be the first to admit, I, this is not my job, what you do.
Yeah.
And I trust what you tell us. That doesn't make me a board member, he doesn't care. But I, A, I do not have the background training in that, nor do I have that kind of time, nor do I have access, really, to that entire system.
You know, again...
So, thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that, but I want to be very clear, though. This isn't specific to a public school district. I work for a family business. I've worked for manufacturing companies. I've worked for utilities. I've worked for hospital systems. I've worked for Blue Cross School Shield. This is not unique. They have to get to this, their financial system and dig, too. This is, there's no one solution that'll give you, if someone has a question, you'd be like, poof, there it is. You gotta dig. It's man-hours. It's the way, that's life. It's called analysis.
I put a lot of man-hours in, I see.
Yeah.
Mentioning man-hours, what would you estimate for these answers?
Today, I, today and yesterday, just alone, I spent 70 hours just digging in, making sure that what I provided was as accurate as I can. I mean, this, this, you know, we're a medium-sized school district. We don't have a large staff. I've got, I've got three people. I've got my accountant, my CPA, my controller. I have, in the business office, I have my semi-part-time controller, and what she really does is payroll. And then, I have my accounts payable. That's it. It's me. So, you know, when questions are asked, they're doing their job. We're role players. This isn't some big ivory tower where I'm asking people to delegate my work to. I'm doing this work, and that's fine. I'm not crying, I'm just telling you, that's, that's the reality. You know, we're, in every school district, every company, I shouldn't even say school district, they have to deal with this, you know? It's just, that is what it is, that's your job. But, you know, it's a lot of hours, a lot of hours.
Sam, I have a question.
Yes.
Could you, when you looked at the IB budget, that IB budget just recurs every year? That 400 and some, roughly?
Well, it depends.
About how much?
You know, if I looked at probably the previous year, it may have been high threes, I'm trying to recall from '14, '15.
Okay, I was curious about that.
Just like any budget in any program within the general fund or any other fund, food service, athletics, it's, 86% of the budget is people. It's salary, it's wages, you know? So, yeah, so it's close, it was close.
Could you just tell me again that Dr. Skilling is not benefiting in any way financially from our district with the international program?
No. Not in our financials.
I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Sure.
I guess I just have one last question. As you were saying, in the last couple of days, you spent seven to eight hours just on this list of questions.
Yeah.
So, all of your other duties, obviously, had to go by the wayside?
I'm supposed to be contributing to our audits, management discussion and analysis, which is part of our audit. It gets printed out. It's on the back burner until tomorrow. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Barner? Mr. Schwag?
Not a question, but comment. Appreciate the detail he went into in answering these questions. I think they were good questions.
Yeah.
It gives all of us an exposure to a real life experience as to what you do and what our budget entails. I have quite an extensive knowledge of budgets, at least from the high school level and what goes into it, and then a little bit more in a district. But to see this and understand the answers and that, I really appreciate the detail he went into and the questions that were asked gives us a chance to have a better understanding of what the district does. And it only makes me feel more comfortable with the job that our business department has been doing and our books and how we get audited and things like that. So, I appreciate the direction that we're going on all of these areas. And I do think there was room for improvement, and it's been happening, and I'm glad to see it continue. And as we have a better understanding of it, we can continue to monitor it as a board as we go forward and keep it on the right track.
Sam, how long do you have to respond to a FOIA request?
I believe it's five days, if I'm not mistaken, unless there's a main issue. Pat, you may know better than I am. Sorry to put you on the spot, but unless there is something that is prohibiting you from getting the data and I can't, I don't know, if someone's not around or just it takes you longer than you anticipate to pull the data, you can go five days, you have to, I guess, give an extension. But I believe it's five days, if I'm not mistaken.
It's five days, and then if you need more time, you can extend it another 10 days.
Okay. And does the person who issued the FOIA have to pay for the services that it takes to bring all the data together?
What has to happen when a FOIA request is given is you have to really analyze how much time it's gonna take to put it together. Because, as Sam said, it does take some time to figure out, where am I gonna get the data? Who do I have to contact? What do they have to do? So, um, we can charge a fee for man-hours, but it's gotta be the lowest paid, um, person who could, who could acquire that fee, and usually that's clerical. But as you can see, it's not usually clerical people who pull that together. So, you know, it's, 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 can be pretty expensive, but it really isn't representative of the person who's doing the work, because it's, it's usually the top-level people who are pulling those things.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Holbert, do you want to add, uh, have the OVA questions, correct?
Yep.
All right.
Um, I kinda broke them off the same way Sam did. The first question that I received was, the report that you gave, to the recent Board of Education meeting states that the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year FTE was two hundred and fifty-six point one four, see board briefs, October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. However, the information provided in the board packet states the OVA FTE of four hundred and eighty-one point nine seven, which number is correct? So what I did was I provided you, uh, last year's audited numbers and this year's pre-audited numbers. So if you look at the two thousand fifteen, sixteen numbers, um, the OVA was five hundred and seventy-three point six three, OSEC was a hundred and thirty point seven five, and the shared time was forty-nine point seven. The numbers that I presented at last board meeting was the pre-audited numbers for two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So OVA, as a pre-audited right now, is eight hundred and twenty-nine point seven seven. The FTE, the, the number two hundred and fifty-six point one four that's stated in the question was how much we're up over last year's numbers. Um, OSEC is a hundred and eighty-three, FTE, we're up fifty-three from previous years, and shared time is forty-eight point three four.
Excuse me, Drew?
Yes.
People in the back can't hear, so.
Just hold it close, so you're good, just hold it close.
Hello?
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, sorry. The total number of FTE of district students enrolled in OVA. So, the question was, total number of district resident students enrolled in OVA. Um, so OSEC, the FTE resident student is ninety-four, the OVA resident student is eighty point six two FTEs.
Drew, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Can you define resident?
Somebody that would live in the Oxford borders.
Okay.
Um, we do follow school of choice, um, both one oh five and one oh five C, um, so many of our FTEs are students that don't live within the residency of Oxford schools.
And on my own curiosity, I believe there was a question of legal resident of Oxford OVA. Legal resident would be anybody that touches the, the Oakland County, so any county?
So, legal would be any, anybody in contiguous counties that touch, so it's done by district ISDs, um, so any, any county ISD that touches the Oakland County ISD is legally, we are allowed to enroll.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so number three was, what was the total income for OVA in two thousand fifteen, sixteen? Uh, Mr. Barna kinda stated that already. Um, we had seven hundred and four point three eight FTEs, and a foundation of seven, seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one. So it came to about five point two million, uh, was our, and we don't necessarily do income, that is our revenue. Um, the total expenses, Mr. Barna just put that in his. Um, what was the total income for the OSEC dual enrollment for two thousand fifteen, sixteen? Again, it's the same formula. The FTE was one thirty point seven five, times seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one, that brings us to nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, three seventy-three point two five. Um, expenses, again, were just presented by Mr. Barna as well. Uh, number seven, does OVA or OSEC offer ID classes? If so, what classes are offered? No, OVA and OSEC do not participate in the International Magloria. Uh, number eight, what was the total advertising and promotions expenditures for the combined OVA and OSEC for two thousand fifteen and sixteen? Uh, we didn't break it out by specific OVA, because many, much of our advertising is for the entire district. Um, and so last year, we spent fifty-three thousand, and I should say fifty-three thousand and three hundred dollars, uh, for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year for the entire district advertising. Uh, number nine, how many students will be serviced under the shared time program? How many FTEs will this amount to, and what is the expected income and expense per student? Um, so the two thousand fifteen, sixteen shared time came to forty-nine point seven zero FTE. The revenue, and I messed that up, is seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one, and that would come to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Um, the expenses, we don't break out individually per student, uh, the total expenses were already represented in Mr. Barna's presentation. Number ten, will Oxford schools, including OVA, pay for college classes for shared time students? No, legislatively, dual enrollment courses are not available for any parochial or shared time student. Uh, number eleven, how many OVA classes must be taken to qualify for payment of college classes by Oxford schools? So I kinda broke this out a little further, um, than the question asks, but Oxford, Oxford schools follows all state regu- requirements for dual enrollment. We are legally restricted from adding any additional requirements to any dual enrollment students. So, legislation states that for Oxford resident students, there are no minimum number of OVA classes that must be taken. We are limited to ten total dual enrollment courses that we're allowed to pay for. For a non-resident student, there has to be, and there needs to be, one graded anchor course taken through OVA to qualify for a dual enrollment course. Number twelve, does OVA, OSEC, or Oxford schools pay for books or materials for college classes for OVA or OSEC? Uh, for the early middle college programs, we pay for, uh, any fees, books, any kind of extra cost that might occur to the student. Uh, that's the benefit of the early college program, is you can go through and you can get sixty to seventy credits, and it will be absolutely zero cost to the family. We are very proud to offer that program here. Um, there are no, we do not pay for books or fees for OVA students, only for the OSEC students. Uh, number thirteen, will non-public school facilities be used to provide education by Oxford schools employees to any OVA student or student receiving educational credit from OVA? Meaning, will the class be taught anywhere other than Oxford public schools within the Oxford schools district boundary by any Oxford schools employee? So, under that one, uh, the answer is yes. Uh, we, all classes provided through OVA are virtual courses, every single one of our courses, but we have, we partner with some private organizations, and some of you may have even seen that we partnered with the majority of all companies that are in the legacy center. So we're very proud to have those opportunities for students to have what we call the lab component to their courses. So they do a virtual class, and then they have the opportunity for a hands-on experience once a week through a, a private organization. All right, number fourteen, will Oxford schools, including OVA, be providing or paying for any instruction of any students by a non-certified teacher or a teacher who is not an employee of Oxford schools? This includes our classes, dance, et cetera. If so, what is the anticipated cost for the fif- two thousand sixteen, seventeen fiscal year, and how many students will be serviced by such an agreement? The simple answer is no. Um, all classes offered through Oxford Community Schools and Oxford Virtual Academy must and do have a certified teacher attached to those courses. Uh, does OVA or OSEC use competitive bid programming for educational services provided by non-district employees? Going back to the last statement, all courses have a district employee, staff member attached to all courses. Number sixteen, uh, could you please explain how the partnerships with groups such as Renaissance Homeschool, Harbor Homeschool, Lincoln Learning Solution, Quo Vadis Homeschoolers, Link School of the Arts, Brain Monkeys, et cetera, what income is generated, and what is the OVA's role and expenses with each group? So, some of these companies, um, the revenue is based on enrollment, so we don't, we don't gain any income outside of the enrollment, the per pupil foundation that we receive from the state. Um, all expenses are accounted for in the OVA budget. Uh, some of these companies that are listed, there's, there's multiple different companies on that list. Um, some are partnerships with homeschool organizations, some are private businesses, and then others are virtual vendors that we purchase, uh, curriculum from. Seventeen, why did you, why did you accept students after head count, which resulted in receiving far less than the full per pupil funding, yet had to provide services for a majority of the academic year? Um, so this wasn't stated whether we would, we are receiving after the fall head count or after the spring head count, but either way, we are legally able to accept students that fall under two categories. If they are a resident student, we can take them at any time, and we are legally obligated to. Um, there is another organization, or another classification, which are called O6, and those are exceptions to those rules, um, and for reference, it's under section four of the pupil account, Michigan Pupil Accounting Manual. Uh, number eighteen, do you provide computers, Chromebooks, laptops, iPads, or other electronic equipment to OVA students? If so, does every student receive one? What is the criteria? Uh, so I copied the actual portion of the Pupil Accounting Manual down there, um, and so if a student is part of a seat time waiver program, which the Virtual Academy is, they, a computer and internet, the district is obligated to provide. So the pupil's residency location does not factor into the formula or the determination on computer or internet. So I'm just gonna read real quick the Pupil Accounting Manual, uh, for cost, tuition, and fees for a seat time waiver student. So the district is required to pay the costs associated with providing the pupil with a computer. The computer must support internet capacity and appropriate software configuration for the use of pupil at home while enrolled in the virtual courses. The district must offer, offer to provide internet access. The internet capacity shall provide at least three megabytes download and one megabyte upload speed. Uh, nineteen refers again to the same thing, it says, do you provide internet services and equipment to OVA students? If so, does every student receive them? What is the criteria? So, we provide services, again, I, I quoted the Pupil Accounting Manual, we require, or we provide services to those that need it. Um, we don't segregate whether they're resident, non-resident, um, if they need access to a computer or internet, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that they're a successful student. Uh, number twenty, how many F1 visas students enroll in OVA for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year and two thousand sixteen, seventeen fiscal year? How many in OSEC do enrollment? What was that last word?
Same year.
In the same year. So the answer is zero. We don't have any students under an F1 visa that enroll in OVA or OSEC. So that's the end of mine. Questions or comments?
Any questions?
Comment?
Comment?
Well, again, um, obviously you spent quite a bit of time on that, um, and I'm assuming that you also had to put aside other district duties in order to prepare for that today. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Drew. What an outstanding program. It's incredible.
I guess my comment is the same, just as for Sam's excellent, going into such detail. I've learned a lot. I thought I knew a lot about it, which I did, but this evening is more, I appreciate all the time, uh, that you put into it and the detail that you went into and the explanations, so that you can shine a light on any questions that's been asked.
Any further questions, comments for Drew? Drew? Okay, thank you, Drew. Okay, that's gonna lead us to, uh, item twelve, unscheduled audience participation. Um, as in the past, I'm just gonna remind you, some of you weren't here at the beginning, as a reminder, tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in the pub, in the public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The Board is at its discretion, may take a recess or postpone at the meeting at any further time. Tonight, the Board will address questions directed to OVA and the Financial Department, which we've already done. There will be a time, which is now, for comments during non-arranged audience participation. Please hold any comments, uh, or concerns until after the question has been answered by the appropriate administrator. If you ask, if you wanna answer a question, we're gonna point to the appropriate person to answer that question, the person with that expertise. Once we enter the comment period of the meeting, we will be complying with our written bylaws and policies. All comments are to be directed to the Board President, myself. Um, I will assign them to the appropriate administrator for a response. There will be no derogatory comments tolerated. Please stick to factual information, no opinions. Any, feel free, and, uh, our Board policy states that if you just give your name, we're not gonna make you fill out a card, just your name where you live. Oh, I'm sorry. You'll be happy to know we've increased it to five minutes as opposed to three. So when it goes off, we'll be keeping the time here. Yes, ma'am? In the paint? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Melissa Williams, I have a parent here, I'm the PTO president here at OES. Um, I haven't had a chance to officially, on record, thank, uh, Tim Throon and Board for helping us get the new playground equipment out here at the elementary school, so I wanted to just, you know. I'm so thankful that we are a district where, cause I've talked to other districts, and there's not this magic pot of money, where when we need a, uh, playground that they just, here you go, right? So, I'm so glad that we do these, um, we have OVA, and we have all these other programs that brings those extra funds into our district, so that the district did have an opportunity to help us as volunteers reach our goal, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody? Kelly?
Um, yeah, do, do I need to stand, or can I?
Yeah, please, you can stand up and.
I, I've got some paperwork, it's a little bit cumbersome.
Okay, you can bring it up here and then the microphones, cause I don't think they'll be able to hear, cause they don't pick up audio real well, that's why you've been using a microphone all evening.
Well, I mean, she just stood up and, oh.
Hello? You ready?
Could you stand, so that we can?
Please use the microphone.
Sure, thank you. All right, um, that was obviously my email that I sent. I, I think there was a little miscommunication as to the FOIA. I simply FOIA'd the financial records. My FOIA was for the electronic copy of the records. Um, that's what it was, and so that's a keystroke that does that, I can transfer that.
I still can't hear you back, I'm sorry.
Is it on? Hello? Can you hear me? I, I can just speak a little bit louder. I was saying that there's a miscommunication on the FOIA. I didn't FOIA these questions, these questions were a personal email that I sent to Mr. Barna and Mr. Holbert. So, my FOIA was for the electronic finances of the system, which is a keystroke. It takes, uh, five seconds to drop that onto a, a drive, which I provided. So, that's what, what it was. And after I reviewed that financial document, which is not difficult to go through, um, I know how to use spreadsheets, I went through it, I had some questions as I saw that with certain items. So, it's very easy to go through that document, yes, it's multiple pages, the spreadsheet is long, it takes a long time for us to scroll and, and back and forth, but by using searches, you can find these things. And I would think that members of the Board would know how to look for these if they had questions on certain finances, cause I saw a lot of finances and expenditures on things that just really don't seem like they're helpful to the district, and there are ways that you could cut costs to provide more money for playgrounds and certain things, like the recent trip to Doubles Ridge for, you know, what is that, the administrators, for thirteen hundred dollars, and that goes on every year. Travel, dinners out, and, you know, spending like that, and I think if you actually look at that, you could really cut that out, it's not necessary for education of our students here, and, you know, we have better things to spend our money on. So, my FOIA was specifically for the financial data, these are questions I had as follow-up. I, I can't for the life of me find out why it would take him, how many hours did you say it went to go through, with the questions?
Several hours.
Several hours, okay.
Eight hours.
It, I heard two days, like you worked two days on it, but, so a couple hours?
Yes.
Okay, that, that, that I can understand, cause you're fact-checking some of the information, you want to get it correct, so I, I can understand that. But, the questions I asked are things that people have been asking all along. What is the program, you know, what does the program cost? What's the income? Where's it come from? What accounts is it divvied up to? So, that shouldn't be a secret, it shouldn't take all of us to get it out. Thank you for that information, it was very helpful, and it was worth doing that, because a lot of people have been asking that question, and I think we all learned a lot from this, especially on the specific programs, so that is great, I really thank you very much for that. Uh, follow-up question I had on that, as I know on the international program, you had talked about the title, the Title III funds? Um, for that, and those are government funds then that are coming from a fund to be expended on these students, which are not taxpaying students, and they're not taxpayers of Michigan. So they're depleting money from a fund that is meant to actually go and assist the, the kids here in Oxford and in Michigan and throughout the United States. Me personally, I have a problem with that. Um, you also are including in your profit numbers the money you're taking from the state in terms of the state pupil formula, and the, the foundation money, and you're not returning that money to the state, you're keep, you're keeping it, so you're taking money out of the hands of our educational pool and, and educating foreign students with it. Again, I personally have a problem with that.
We can't hear you back here.
Okay, I, I'm saying that they're using funds from the state. The seventy-three hundred dollars, the- and educating foreign students with it. Again, I personally have a problem with that.
We can't hear you back here.
Okay, I'm saying that they're using funds from the state. The seventy-three hundred dollars, the per pupil foundation, is being paid for every foreign student that comes here. That's taking money from the state that's collected from the taxpayers and the property taxes and the sales tax, and taking it from the fund, which means there's less money for the rest of the students to go around. So it all has to come from somewhere. If you're gonna run a program like this for the international, don't take money from our government sources. And don't take money from the state formula. You do not have to collect that, but you can raise your tuition to cover that cost, and they should be covering that full cost. That is what the federal government says. The taxpayers are not supposed to be subsidizing that whatsoever. And when you're taking from the state, we are subsidizing that, and that's wrong. That needs to stop. You'd make a lot of people happy if you stopped using federal funds and state funds to educate foreign students. That's just a simple request that I have. I think that would make a lot of people very happy. You know, as for the rest, there are minor questions, and I'd be happy to follow up with Mr. Burnham, you know, at some point. They're very quick, and, you know, I appreciate what was said here today.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Rosner. I live at eighteen thirty Cobblestone Drive. And my, that's a pile of big papers right there. I brought my paper right here. It's my tax statement. One sheet. And the biggest numbers on there pertain to what's in that big pile of papers. I'm retired on a fixed income. The majority of people in our neighborhood are retired, there's very few that have. We think the teachers are doing a good job. Our issues are not with the teachers. The teachers are doing a good job under some pretty difficult situations sometimes. But, you know, being retired, we're on a fixed income. And we, you just can't keep digging into your pocket and coming up with more money. So consequently, we need to take and use the money that we get, and we need to contribute to the education. I don't have a problem paying the taxes for this, but let's make sure that the money is used the way it was meant to be used. To educate the students and the residents of the Oxford School District, not foreign students, not other students, there's ways of getting money for them. So we need to take and make certain that we do that. And I think tonight was a big help. We saw that it wasn't, it's not as hard as it looks like it would be to really get the numbers. And I think it's a benefit to everyone, the school board of residents, to take and look at that carefully, because we don't have to go very far from here, just a little way south, and we find school districts that are hundreds of millions of dollars in the red, because they didn't spend money wisely. So there's tools available, there's answers that can be gotten without spending, you know, and getting in heated arguments about asking a question. There's nothing wrong with asking a question. There's only something wrong with asking a question when you don't get an answer. You know, and the one thing that kinda got my attention is when the word exclusive contract came up, I get very nervous when we have exclusive contracts. And that's, you know, I heard that we did business when there was someone that had an exclusive contract, which probably is particularly harmless, but it leaves questions open, you know, from the Board standpoint. What was involved with exclusive contract? You know, I had an operation and no one in my operation did exclusive contracts. It was bits every time. And I think it was a good indication to see that data is available. Use a computer smartly and it'll keep us all out of trouble. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Gibbons?
Jim Gibbons. I am a teacher, I'm president of the Oxford Educational Association, which is the teachers' union. I'm a resident, I'm a parent of students in the district, and I'm a taxpayer as well. I have to disagree with Mr. Rosner. He said you don't have to go too far south to see districts who are millions of dollars in red, because they didn't spend tax dollars wisely. That is, that is a true statement. However, you don't have to go too far south, east, west, or north to see districts that are struggling financially because they did not innovate like our district has done. We've innovated with our OVA, we've innovated with our international program, we've innovated with our international baccalaureate program, and that is drawing students to our district. That is how you fund the school districts now. The number of students that come through our doors, whether it be seated students or virtual students, is how we provide opportunity to every single one of our students. Oxford students, my children, does not matter. That's how we fund the school districts, through innovation and through the marketing that we do. That's the rules that the state of Michigan has set up. So as a taxpayer, I'm happy to see that my dollars are being used to better educate every single student in Oxford, and that we are a district that is innovating to bring in more students and not having to make cuts and not having to decide which educational programs our students don't get the benefit from. I think it's a colossal waste of time to have to answer questions of this nature. We have financial reports, we have an audit process that we go through as a district, and our administrators that sit here in the central office and at the building level, to have to jump through the hoops that they're being asked to jump through is a waste of the resources that I as a taxpayer pay.
That's it? Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Right there in the middle. Dawn Campbell?
My name is Dawn Campbell. I'm a resident of Oxford, I'm a taxpayer. I have a graduate of Oxford High School, and I have a sophomore at Oxford High School. I'm a proud resident of Oxford. One of the reasons we moved here twenty years ago was because of the quality of the school system. I would like to thank the Board, the Superintendent, for all of the work that you do. Mr. Gibbons stole all my thunder, because everything that he said was exactly what was going to come out of my mouth today. I thank you for your innovation. I understand that the way school districts are funded has changed drastically at the state level over the last several years. I should also add that I come from a family of educators. My dad taught for thirty-five years, my sister is a teacher. I respect everything that you do. I also realize that I am not a certified auditor. I do not understand how a multimillion dollar budget comes together. Therefore, I don't feel qualified to get through that document at a line-by-line level and understand it in its entirety. And unless you run a multimillion dollar school district, quite frankly, I don't think anyone in the room does either. I also would like to say that I just, I thank you for your transparency. I don't know that we could ask for more. I think you're more than forthcoming with all of the information that you provide, and I thank you for that. I agree with Mr. Gibbons as well, and I'd just like to reiterate, it is a colossal waste of our district resources to have to deal with these types of inquiries. It's ridiculous. We rely on the Superintendent, who is a man of great integrity. We rely on the Board, who we elect, to provide a district that is transparent in its spending and provides a quality education to our students. I think you do both, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, good to see you.
It's great to be here. You never could get enough public meetings in your schedule. I just want, Sam kinda stole our thunder. I can't say much, but there's an important bond coming up. And I could tell you, as your Parks and Rec Director here for twenty-one years, when other departments were pulling back, we invested. We invested in this community through splash pads, playgrounds, soccer fields, buying property to keep families here. I can tell you, when people look for a community to come to, for schools and Parks and Rec, they don't look for police, they don't look for fire, they don't look for water, they don't look for sewers. What are you gonna do for my family? So we have an important ballot coming up. It's a two million dollar capital gain or capital improvement ballot for all of our parks. So again, if you like what we've done, if you trust in me, trust in this department, you know, I can't tell you how to vote, but I think you can figure that out. But we're gonna have two public forums, one tomorrow night, one Thursday night. Superintendent Throne will be there, speaking on behalf of support of the Parks and Rec Commission, our bond. I, in return, will do the same thing for the schools. It's amazing, if the general public knew how much we share resources between the two bodies of government, you wouldn't have any idea how much money you're saving. To give you an idea, if you go to Lakeville, our staff is over there helping put that playground in. Tony Sirkin, our park superintendent, can share resources almost daily. So the amount of money that is saved to the general taxpayer, and I'm a taxpayer, between our two bodies of government working closely together is pretty amazing. So it's not something we showcase, it's just something we do. And I think we're very proud of that. So if you have questions, come to that public forum tomorrow night or Thursday night as well. Another thing I want to thank Sam and Matt Johnson and Superintendent Throne is the Peach Jar. We used to do flyers through the schools, paper form, and that was cut out several years ago, and we were never allowed to do it again. And now this new Peach Jar program, I think we've done three mailings, and we've received nothing but positive response from the parents. It's getting our flyers, our information out to your students, which are our customers, for all of our events and programs. So kudos to Mr. Throne, Matt, and whoever else brought us along, because that's a service that was desperately needed, and our residents have really appreciated. So again, you know, I just want to say what a delight it is to work with the schools. We've had some rocky roads in the past, but it's back, it's great, and our residents, your residents, and everybody's benefiting while we work closely together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Peruski?
Thank you. Neil Peruski, I'm a teacher, parent, taxpayer. Jim's sidekick is vice president of our association. Just to add a little bit of detail to what Jim said in case not everybody knows, South Bus Lake Orion, they're closing an elementary school. I just heard yesterday in LaPierre, they've gone from over nine thousand students to just over five thousand students. Imagine what that does for a district's finances. Brandon, not too long ago, had multiple pay cuts for their teachers, and they were not highly paid in the first place at all. It's because of the innovation, the ideas from all of you, that we are not lumped in that group, and that there's not someone else at their Board of Education meeting talking about how Oxford has lost this and that and the other things, because we're doing things differently. And I hope that those of you who put all the time into pairing all this information today can get back to what you are getting paid so very well for, and that's to continue moving our district forward with initiatives, doing the things that we already do good, doing them better, because that's really where your talents lie, and that's where your time should be spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Laura Rooster? You're gonna have to come up this way.
Sure.
So we can see your pretty face.
I'll stand right next to you, Jim. My name is Laura, I'm Rooster. I have a graduate of two thousand sixteen, I also have a sophomore at Oxford High School. I am a taxpayer and a resident. My daughter's in OSAC, and that was a choice she made based on her academic needs. I am thrilled that this program is here. Not only does it give her the independence to be able to not only pursue college courses on top of her high school courses, but it gives her an opportunity to also work with the community. Part of OSAC is that they have to be, do a capstone project, they have to be community-minded. These are things that she probably would not have looked into as a student doing, whether it be AP courses or whatnot. She's already working on her capstone project, which is not until her fifth year, which would be the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year. She's already volunteered into three different organizations within the community, and this is all on her own time, my guess, because she's fifteen, doesn't drop. So with that being said, if you look at how many kids choose whether or not they do virtual, whether they do OSAC or whether they do a seated program, it could be numbers, it could be dollars, but when you look at the grand scheme of things, it's about the students, it's about making them community-minded, it's about making them globally-minded. And since you're on the subject of Peach Jar, which I love, because there's nothing worse than going through fifteen sheets of paper that come home, whether it be through the snail mail or through the Friday folders, just seeing that stack of paper, I don't even wanna know how many reams of paper that took to print, not alone, not even the electronic and the printer cartridges and whatnot. If these are stuff that you can look at a spreadsheet, by all means, look at a spreadsheet. I understand why you have to have that here, and to me, it saddens me. If you have a question, ask the question. I think that if you're asking the question, ask the question in the mindset of the school district and the kids. Yes, there is checks and balances, yes, there is fiscal responsibility, and yes, there's not, but if you look at the grand scheme of things, we're not closing buildings, we're adding, we're expanding. Our resources are good, and in that sense, I'm proud of where I am, and I'm proud of this community, and I'm proud of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
You stole half my stuff, Jim.
Sorry.
Bruce Myers?
Bruce Myers, Oxford resident. I really appreciate the information that was given tonight. I kind of would appreciate that we got a lot of the little bits of information before, and it wouldn't have had been so long, but I think I learned a lot. I imagine that you also learned a lot too tonight. I don't think you knew, even being Board members, a lot of the details of the program that you had. I'm impressed, it's pretty good. A little disappointed that some people think it was a waste of time, but it was something that educated the whole community and gave validity, and we're working towards transparency, which is something that we had a little bit of issue with in the past. So I think it's a great step forward, I appreciate it. I'd like to keep going in that direction. I do have a couple little questions that we can follow up with later, if you authorize Mr. Throne to answer them, but, you know, it's, this is a big step forward for everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can follow up with Tim afterwards, and he'll either set out an appointment or he'll answer them. If there's small questions, I'm sure he could take care of that now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Guthrie?
Hi, I'm Jenny Guthrie. I'm speaking just because I am a parent and an Oxford resident and a concerned citizen and a taxpayer. I also had the privilege of working with the international students when I was a teacher, and I just wanted to mention that I do have a student, a daughter who was a senior and graduated last year, and she was, she worked with the Social Justice Committee, and I also have a sophomore at Oxford High School. And I just need to mention that they have grown as people so much because of the international program. So if we talk about that program from the standpoint of taxpaying dollars and paying for students who are international students being here, and we're just paying for them, but they're not a part of our educational program, I disagree with that completely. I was the afternoon ESL instructor for that group of people, and we had multiple interactive sessions with American students, and I watched the students work together and learn from each other and communicate together, and I know that they do this in the hallways, because I was a substitute teacher, and I watched them interact, and I know that this is something they're gonna continue to do more and more and more. We are a global school, and that is something I am so proud of, and I think our students are learning from this more than other students do who don't have the opportunity to have that much exposure to this many students from a different country. And I'm so proud- And I'm so proud of it, I think it's fantastic. We're teaching Chinese in our schools, and we also have students from that country to represent that culture. We're celebrating some of their holidays in our schools. We're doing amazing things with our students and with those students, and we're giving them an opportunity too, but it's a give and a take. I think those tax dollars are very well spent, at least I know mine are very well spent. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm sorry, I know most everybody, but the names...
Jackie Gacy.
Thank you, Jack.
We've posted 12 exchange students in the last three years, and I'm here because I've heard a lot of the negative comments, and I for one, I for one, don't want to support a program that's going to take from my children, because I'm a parent in Oxford, I'm a taxpayer. And so I was thinking, I need to question myself, is this something I should still endorse? What are we doing? And I've heard everything, and in four years, I've never seen any negative impact to my children's, to the programs here in Oxford. I've seen them benefit, I've seen them grow, and I've seen the experience that we've had reading and learning about these families, and every single one of them stays in contact with us. They've all gone to American colleges, and they've all welcomed us to China. So, like I said, I'm here because I want to hear both sides, and I just don't see it. I do know last year, I saw a lot of information from the host's family perspective that was inaccurate, I can tell you that, but I'm proud to be an Oxford resident, I'm proud to have my kids in this school, I'm sad to see the program seemingly to dwindle, and I hope it doesn't.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? And what we've been doing, and I'm sorry, because there was people filtering in, the last, I don't know, maybe four or five board meetings, we've just had the people that were running for school board just acknowledge them that they're here, because I think it's important that people know that they're engaged and they're coming to board meetings. And if I miss anybody in the back, I'm sorry, just stand up, but I see Heather Schaefer is here, Jenny Guthrie is here, Bruce Meyer is here, and Callie Rosner, is it Callie Rosner, Callie Rosner Meyer, because if they see it on the ballot, I want to make sure that it's correct.
It's Rosner.
Rosner, I'm sorry. Callie Rosner?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else that's running for board position? You?
You.
That? We're not going there. I know Ron Rube stood up, I thought maybe he was going to surprise.
Right in, right?
Go right in, right? Yes, great. All right, before I close it out, is there anybody else that has participated in the scheduled participation? Clarification, Mr. Throne.
None at this time.
Okay. All right, final board comments. Mr. Shoemaker.
Okay. I'm going to apologize now, because mine's going to be pretty long-winded. In my seven years of service, this is only the second time that I've come to a board meeting with a written statement. Let me start over? Okay. In my seven years of service, this is only the second time I've come to a board meeting with a written statement to take a stand for the board and our staff. But this afternoon, I put my thoughts to paper. I want to comment on an email that the board members recently received, in a group email on October 19th, 2016, at 12:22 PM. In the email, we were asked to, and I quote, "As elected members of the board, I implore you to state your personal viewpoint on each of these questions." Two of the questions were short answered, and the third sought our personal agreement or lack thereof with seven statements submitted by the writer of the email, Callie Rosner. Most of us were at work when we received this email. After coming home from work and reading my email, I chose not to respond, because multiple trainings that we've taken through the Michigan Association of School Boards has ingrained in me that group emails that express individual opinions could constitute a violation of the Open Meetings Act if a quorum of board members were to reply to the same email. In addition, our board has long ago chosen to utilize a board spokesperson, and that is Mark Stepek. I had considered sending a separate email to Callie to explain that, however, I was then informed that four short hours after sending the email to us, she had posted the questions and additional comments via some form of social media. And I'm just going to read to you the comments. Will your board members respond? A lack of open communication between the current Board of Education and the residents of our school district has resulted in programs that lose money and do not focus on district children. When the board continually congratulated themselves and the staff for a job well-done, while refusing to substantiate the information and data submitted, it creates an atmosphere where truth and accountability suffer. We elect our board to represent us and be accountable to us. That means, when we ask questions about programs, we expect well-thought-out and researched responses, not a parroting of what an administrator said, or the passing along of a document that is not accurate. The board members are not doing their duty if they refuse to answer or simply provide documents without an assertion that they have confidence in. I've continually asked these simple questions of the board and superintendent, and have been met with a complete failure to respond, and enforced to get information through FOIA instead of open communication. I've again asked the current Board of Education, including Mr. DelSandro, to answer a few simple questions. These questions should be readily answered, and every citizen deserves to know the answers to the questions, so we can properly respond and have transparency and accountability. After digesting these statements, I decided that I wanted to address the accusations regarding board transparency, communication, and accountability. The first statement I'll address, "A lack of open communication between the current Board of Education and the residents of our school district has resulted in programs that lose money and do not focus on district children." We utilize multiple outlets to openly communicate with the public, our website, the Oxford Leader, OCTV, the district newsletter, recorded open board meetings, audits, state-required reports, and then I learned tonight, we have a new thing, Peach Jar. As related to students, we added HOSA and ASAB at the high school, reading interventions, and updated playgrounds at elementary levels. We expanded our middle school robotics team from one to three to accommodate the students that we didn't have room for, because the teams are required by the organization that they participate in first robotics to limit the number on a team. All of those require financial commitments. If our programs were still losing money, then we would not have been able to implement new programs and increase our fund balance as well. The next statement, "When the board continually congratulated themselves and staff for a job well-done, while refusing to substantiate the information and data submitted, it creates an atmosphere where truth and accountability suffer." It's good to acknowledge the success of a very committed and hard-working staff. I make no apology for that. To not do so creates an atmosphere where low morale and reduced productivity abounds. When Tim became superintendent, he and his staff set about evaluating all our programs, and have been making adjustments for continued improvement. They have not been dishonest or lacked accountability. In fact, I would say they are more accountable and operate in an honest manner. I have yet felt lied to, or that someone is withholding information since Tim became our district leader. In fact, recent surveys of 2015 and 2016 of our staff show increased trust in leadership over 2014. He came on board in 2015. The next statement, "We elect our board to represent us and be accountable to us." The next two questions and answers that I'm going to read came from the MASB website, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards, and this is public information, I didn't have to log into any special account to get these. Who is responsible for the educational program of a school district? The answer they provided, "Under state law, school board members are state officers who carry out the state's educational obligations at our local level." What is the primary function of the school board? Their answer, "The primary function of the Board of Education is to oversee the education of the people in the community." My response, "Many of the actions we take are required by the state, and we strive to adhere to the many, many requirements, often seeking the opinion of our attorney to avoid inadvertent errors due to lack of our experience and our understanding. We are overseers, not daily managers, that's why we have all the employees. Our board has taken a combined total of 64 classes provided by MASB that help educate us as to the proper role and function of school board members. Between us, we have 29 years of experience as school board members. There still remain many classes that we haven't had the time to take. Our knowledge and understanding as a board member becomes drastically different once we learn and start to serve. The true experts are our employees. They're in the trenches every day, they know the information, they implement the programs, and provide us with reports. I know that they know more than me, and I am not at all threatened by that. Thank you for providing the information that you do." The next statement, "That means, when we ask questions about programs, we expect well-thought-out and researched responses, not a parroting of what an administrator said, or the passing along of a document that's not accurate. In Callie's email to the board on October 19th, that requested a total of nine responses, she stated, 'The answer should take less than two minutes and a prompt response is requested.' I did the math, that's approximately 13 seconds per response. I consider myself a pretty intelligent person, but in no way, shape, or form can I provide a well-thought-out and researched response in 13 seconds and respond promptly. As another example, on October 18th, Callie emailed Mr. Holbert a list of 20 questions saying, 'I'm hoping that you can answer some questions I have that relate to the OVA and OSEC programs. It seems like a long list, but the information should be readily available, and brief answers would be sincerely appreciated. The list doesn't seem long, it is long. It has occurred on multiple occasions that when well-thought-out and research answers are provided in a brief format, another lengthy list of follow-up questions is sent. Communication is a two-way street, and I feel that the requests you make are contradictory.'" The next statement, "The board members are not doing their duty if they refuse to answer or simply provide documents without an assertion that they have confidence in." Again, I went to the MASB website, I copied two questions and their responses. How do school boards make decisions? When making decisions, school boards seek the advice and counsel of the district administrators, teachers, and other employees, as well as input from the community, and specialists with knowledge about the topic under consideration. I will refer to that stack of paperwork. That, for me, takes somebody who specializes in that. What is the most important consideration in making a Board of Education decision? Even though the board members are directly accountable to the people they represent, their primary obligation is to ensure that students' needs are identified and met." And then I came across the most thumb-founding statement to me. "I have continually asked these simple questions of the board and superintendent, and have been met with a complete failure to respond, and enforced to get information through FOIA instead of open communication." As you can see through the board presentations that Sam and Andrew gave, you can see from the information that Mr. Barna has provided, these stacks of information, Mrs. Latauski has put time into FOIAs, this is all FOIA in the box and on the table, I have emails from one employee, and I have consolidation of emails that's 100 and plus. I do not understand how that is considered a complete failure to respond. While it's true that she has continually asked questions as far back as April of 2015, the questions are rarely simple, rather, they are typically numerous with multiple layers. It is a total falsehood when you state that it's been met with a complete failure to respond. I myself have responded, I've been copied on responses of several others, and you've been provided with approximately 37 FOIA request responses, which by the way, equals one every two and a half weeks. The district has spent thousands of hours gathering information, approaching $20,000 in legal fees, and we've had requests to FOIA former FOIAs that they sent. Rarely does it ever seem to satisfy, and on some occasions, the time and energy spent have been disregarded when the FOIA materials were not even picked up. As pertaining to the email that was sent to the board on October 19th, she stated, "After looking through the books and after being asked to respond to questions regarding the biggest issues facing the school district and needed improvements, it's important that I have an understanding on how each board member perceives operations in the districts." Questions referencing the biggest issues facing the district and needed improvements were posed in August and September. Responses were submitted prior to the October 19th email, where the request for individual perceptions was requested. She also stated, "I implore you to state your personal viewpoint on each question." We operate as a board, and we've worked very hard in the last 18 months to learn to work together, regardless of our individual opinions. We've come a long way. We share our opinions during open discussion at meetings, as you saw tonight. None of us hold anything against questions or opinions that we make, but we always come to a consensus, and we vote our particular consciences. None of us is always right, and none of us are always wrong, but we all care deeply about all of our Oxford community students. So I'm going to end by saying this. The last 18 months, under Tim's leadership and the current board, have brought many changes. The past is the past, we're operating in now. As you can see from the answers to the submitted questions, that our staff has spent a lot of time on emails. Tonight was not the first time responses were given in the last 18 months. It's my desire that the time, energy, finances, and resources of this district, board, and our employees be spent attending to the provision of student needs first and foremost. We will follow law by complying with FOIA requests, as we have been. As to unending list of questions via email and personal responses by staff, I recommend periodically presenting questions and answers publicly at board meetings, so they can be accurately recorded and reported. Then staff who are trained to interpret information can do so. They are not paid to train community members to interpret information. This will also make transparent how district time, energy, resources, and funds are being allocated to the relentless barrage of questions, oftentimes already-answered questions. The use of this time, energy, resources, and funding is not... The use of this time, energy, resources, and funding is not in the best interest of students and hampers the ability of staff to tend to the duties we actually pay them for. It is a waste cloaked under the guise of transparency and accountability.
Thank you, Kim. Mike?
Oh, thank you. I'm going to reserve my comments to the last 18 months because I was a person who ran for the board under a previous administration and I was an advocate of change. And I would just say that tonight is a culmination of what I hoped would happen. We've got community involvement, we've got hard issues that we're talking about, and we're doing it in an orderly, civil manner in the best interest of our district. We've got a ways to go yet, but as evidenced by tonight, I don't feel that there is any waste of time, that this was more of an investment and, like I say, a culmination of where we need to go and many of the people have reiterated the fact that they felt that this was a move in the right direction. We may have gone a little bit overboard in our response tonight, but it was very beneficial for me. I think it's part of the healing process of our district to hear parents and people say, and taxpayers say, how far we've come. And I do believe we need to start our district now from when Tim Throne took office and the progress that we've made. We still have a ways to go. It's helpful to me to hear from the community what the concerns are. Is there an efficient and an effective way that we can respond? I think we're getting to that point. And to see this continue is something that I'm going to be a proponent of and I'm glad to see it tonight. I'm impressed with our school district, the seriousness in which we took all of these questions. I feel that we need a board response. I think we've gotten that. I'm glad to always hear from community members what's on their mind and what they need more information on to help them to understand the direction we're going because this is a very transparent and sharing of information, school board and school district. And that's what we're about. That's what we've been about for over a year and a half now, and that's where I want to see our board continue. Our board has come together in discussions, we have disagreements, we've come to a consensus. We need to listen to our community from all aspects to find out what programs are working and how we can make them better, but then we have to make that ultimate decision. And when someone asks me a specific, I'm very willing to give it, but sometimes the answer might just be, "I trust the direction we're going." I can't give a lot more detail sometimes, but I do trust and I am a participant in checking and checks and balances and looking and having open and honest communications, and I've seen nothing but that from all angles, from the community and from our district. So I just want to see this type of dialogue continue because I think it's in the best interest of our school district.
Thank you, Mike. Joyce?
Sure. I echo a lot of the comments I've already heard tonight. You know, it's just an honor to be an elected official for Oxford Schools. I mean, it really, truly is an honor and it's a responsibility I take, you know, very, very seriously. I wish that there was, you know, a bigger shout for accountability, you know, two, three, four years ago because I do think that we went off the rails a little bit as far as expectations for our school board and our employee, the superintendent. But since then, things have really, it's hard for me to say, you know, pre-Tim, post-Tim, and all that kind of stuff because I'm just so emotionally involved with the district and my children and the education of the kids who live here. But I really, really feel that I can disagree with the majority and it's okay to disagree because I really feel like I'm voicing the opinion of the community members who elected me. So I don't just rubber stamp everything that comes through. I think a lot of things have to have some dialogue, enriched dialogue. But it is just a pleasure to serve on this board and working with the individuals who serve on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Steppich?
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to give kudos to Kim. That was wonderful. Thank you. So with that, I agree with you and disagree with Mike in that about the waste of time. I think this is a colossal waste of time, what we've gone through with all these requests for the last 18 months. Kim talked about the MASB classes and I've taken a lot of them and I really enjoy that. And the thing about that is, when I'm at those classes, there's students, which are other board members, from all over the state. And I've taken maybe a dozen classes already so far, maybe more, I can't, I don't remember the exact count, but the running theme in every single one of the classes is, what are we going to cut next in our district? That's these other people talking in all of the districts from all the way Upper Peninsula to Detroit to Grand Rapids, everywhere in the state, to rural, to urban districts, all of them, and I mean all of them, talk about, what are we going to cut next? Lake Oregon's cutting schools, they're cutting programs. We've never had that discussion. We haven't had it here, whether it was pre-Tim or post-Tim. And that's because of what Mr. Gibbons said, what some of the other people said, is the innovation of this board. And I'm proud to be part of that innovation that came from Carol, who's been here forever. And she was one of the originators of that vision, her along with Colleen Schultz, who was the past president. So we don't have that discussion. We have the opposite discussion. What can we add? Can we add reading programs? Can we add math programs? Can we add teachers and tutors for early intervention in reading? We add these programs. So I would like to see our administrators and our staff get back to what they do best, innovating than answering these questions because I trust them, as Kim said. And I want to move our district forward more.
Thank you, Mark. Mrs. Mitchell? Okay. Jim?
I scribbled down a bunch of notes. First, I want to thank Sam very much for the presentation. Thanks Denise. Thank you Drew. Thank you Nancy. We have some of the best administrators, teachers, and staff in the state of Michigan. I've learned one thing being on this board for five years, and that is, the district was doing fine before I got here and the seated board, and it's going to thrive once the newly-elected board has served and are gone. Because the reason it thrives is because we have the best people, the best staff, the ones that know their each individual fields, running the district, and we're doing the oversight. And Mr. Throne is at the helm, and when Mr. Throne is gone and someone takes his spot, the district will thrive because we have good people throughout the district and all the schools. I am personally, I have been fed up with the FOIAs for a long time. Mr. Myers, Kelly Rosner, my wife went out when I was board president and introduced herself to you. My wife is one of the kindest people there are that you will ever meet. You were disrespectful to her. She said, "Can't we just think about this? Can't we just, you know, get to know each other a little bit?" No, what you did is you were bullies. And when I was board president, you came in and called me things like Jimmy Joe and whatever you could make up, and I'm tired of that. But the biggest thing that I'm tired of is going through this for 18 months is you don't like the answers that you get. We follow all state laws, all federal laws regarding visas. You've called FBI, Homeland Security have been out to visit us, SEVIS has been out to visit us, you've called Brooks Patterson in Oakland County. You keep, and all I can think of is it's like a child that is having a tantrum that does not get the right answer, and so you throw your tantrum, and your tantrum has cost the district $20,000 that could be spent on playgrounds or an interventionist for third-grade reading or any number of things. So, you know, I'm just fed up with that. I scribbled a bunch of notes as we were going on in here. The biggest thing is that you call into the integrity of people like Denise and Sam and Drew and Nancy when you say there's no transparency and accountability. And not only that, but all the people that work under them and their staffs and the international program, you call into account their integrity because you say there's no accountability or transparency when that is BS because you've gotten all the answers you want. So, we're audited, you know, we're audited in the books, we've always got a grade A rating in the books like War and Peace. And we, the state, looks over Nancy or Denise's shoulder all the time, makes sure all the FTEs are proper, everything's done, everything's counted, they look over Drew's shoulder. There are so many checks and balances in this, but the biggest thing is, is there's trust. There has to be trust when you run a district like this. And we trust, we trust Mr. Gibbons when he's the head of the union, he's got the union to open up their contract in the past against the advice of the state union. I know, it sounds like I'm rambling now. The international program, our student that we had for two years, Daniel Dai, is coming to spend Christmas with us this year. We had a student last year from Japan, he's at Duke now, we call, we talk to him all the time. We have Rudy, who was with Colleen Schultz, we talk to her once in a while. We have Key, we talk to him. That program has been incredible, beyond the monetary part, but the monetary part has provided so much for all of our students that, I don't know, I'm just proud to have moved to this district, to be a part of this district, and I'm happy my kids went through this district. That's all.
The decorum shouldn't be applied. Or should ask for?
Let's, yeah, let's, a little bit of decorum, let's let them get their statements in. Carol?
A lot to follow, Jim. I appreciate it. First off, I want to thank every single one of you that have come here tonight. This being on the board is a thankless job, and we do a lot, a lot of meetings, no one shows up, no one's here. To hear you tonight, to hear your thoughts, what you value for the district and what you value for your kids' education, to me, we've been doing the right thing. It makes me feel awesome. I couldn't tell you how I feel right now. Six years ago, I mean, you go back six, eight years ago when we had this financial, it was a, it was a cliff. Everybody was going toward that cliff, every district. This board put their neck out and put trust in everybody and in our superintendent. There were a hell of a lot of decisions we had to make, and right now, hearing everybody how much they love this district, it was worth everything we did. And I think we had this set up for this board to continue on, take that damn torch, and you better run with it, and you better be proud of this district because we put so much heart and soul into it. But I'm glad to hear that the results are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Before I get into what I wrote, I think it's really important that we acknowledge previous board, Carol, Jim, Colleen Schultz, Bill Keenest, Doug Meyer, Robert Martin, Mary Stein, all people who have, and Kim. She's still here. And whether you agreed, disagreed, liked, disliked, wherever you want to discuss about Dr. Skilling, you got to understand one thing. We would not be where we at, where we are at today, without his understanding that the state isn't going to come to our rescue any longer. And the board understood his vision and they ran with it. And just as Carol said, it's our job to carry that torch and move forward, and we will do it. We will do it for your kids. So. I want to thank the cabinet for the hours it took to compile the information for public consumption. This is information that's also available on our district website. It's tough to navigate at times, but it was an important process. It's an important process that people have their questions answered. It has been and always will be my way to do one thing, to do things the right way. While it's obvious that we have people that don't agree with the way that school boards in general, not just Oxford, operate, what it really reflects is the lack of understanding what the role of a board member is. A board member's role is to allow the superintendent to run the day-to-day operations and the functions of the district. We're not here to manage, interfere with those daily operations. I do not walk into central office and ask Sam to provide me with a detailed line item of the budget. It is that being fiscally responsible. It allows me, no, but it allows the people to do their work every day and who are the experts in their field to do their job. As a board member, it is my concern that our programs in total are operated within In regards to the emails and social media posts requesting boards to offer their opinion, it also shows that there's a lack of knowledge of what the role of a board member is. Each board member sitting up here has taken MASB classes. In these classes, the topic is forefront in many of the classes that I have attended. As a matter of fact, it is probably the most popular topic in the board president's workshop. First, emails, an email that was addressed by, that is addressed to all board members, if we reply to that, reply all, we're in risk of violating the Open Meetings Act. Second, MASB's best practice is for a board member to never answer a question poised at them on social media. Email and social media is not where the board conducts business. When it comes to my opinion on a specific topic, it only becomes relevant when it becomes the decision of the board. In my opinion, a few members of our community are trying to divide the board to fit the narrative that they have created over the past 18 months. As far as how we run our board meetings, I constantly look for ways to get better as a board member and as a board president. Over the past two weeks, I've watched parts of Lake Orion, Rochester, Troy, Clarkston, Romeo, Brandon, school board meetings for the purpose of watching how different board presidents handle unscheduled audience participation. Every single district follows our same guidelines. Why? Because they are the guidelines of MASB. I will continue to encourage any school board that I'm a part of to follow the direction of MASB. As I have said from the beginning on my time on the board, my focus is on what's best for the staff and students of this district. With that in mind, I hope all staff and parents of students in our district understand how much this board and previous boards care about their careers and the educational opportunities we provide for all Oxford students. Okay. Any other additional comments from the board? I want to point one point of clarification because I addressed that I would answer it at a board meeting, and I think it wasn't asked, but I'm going to answer it anyways. There was a question asked of me on social media, why we went into closed session, dismissed the cameras, and came out and discussed International Resonance Academy. The answer is quite simple, and I'll do it here in public. We came out of closed session to discuss the contract. After that closed session, Superintendent Throne advised the board by the power that we gave him that he was going to renegotiate some of the stipulations in our International Resonance Academy. Anything from the amount of tuition paid, exclusivity- Anything from amount of tuition paid, exclusivity, in four or five different items. The conversation took about 10 minutes. After that, we broke. It was reflected in the minutes that Pat provided, "Other," and it said, "International resonance discussion." Part of, all the classes that we've taken, Pat Bono has taken probably double, if not triple that. Pat Bono knows her craft very, very well, and she is certain that those board minutes were taken appropriately. So thank you, Pat. Mr. Throne?
So, under other, I'm sorry, so under other, I would like to maybe just make one follow-up comment, and I don't know if Mr. Davis is still here or not, or maybe he left, but I will tell you that from a community-school perspective, there may not be any more important community partnership, at least from my lens, 18 months into this job, than the partnership you have with your Parks and Rec. He is absolutely correct in that there are not only operational things that we do back and forth to help each other out, but most importantly, from a student programming perspective, I don't care if it's Parks and Rec offering classes within our school after school's let out, or supplemental activities on the weekend. At the end of the day, it's about offering programming and activities for our students and community. And so I unabashedly will support Parks and Rec and what they're trying to do. I do not think what they are asking is unreasonable by any means, and I want to be clear that the people of Oxford know how I feel on the Parks and Rec ballot issue. So with that, that's all I have.
With that, it is great to be a Wildcat. Being adjourned.